We are going to start. I'd like to approve the minutes, so can everybody take a look? And let me know if you have any changes. These are the minutes from September 12. Everyone's good?
Yeah.
Really?
I'll make a motion to approve the September minutes as submitted.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the minutes pass. So before we get into the director's report, my report, we do have some special guests with us this morning, this evening. This evening. And so I'm going to have Tom introduce them. But welcome. We're happy you're here, and Tom will introduce who they are.
Thank you, Deirdre. Well, it's my pleasure to introduce two gentlemen who will make a presentation this evening. They are Luis Cancel, who is the executive director of the Venezuelan Arts Endowment for for the arts in New Rochelle, as well as Ali Cordero Casal. He is the chairman and founder of that same organization. And I'm happy to announce that this organization, as represented by these gentlemen, will be managing the Black Box Theater that will be coming online in the very near future. And if you gentlemen would like to come up here and speak, I think we have a microphone?
Can you sideways so they can see? They want to see too.
Oh, I see.
The audience.
Right. Can you hear me? Okay. Well, first I wanted to thank Tom and all the board members of the New Rochelle Public Library for extending this gracious invitation to address you during your official gathering. And we don't want to take up too much of your time, but we did want to to say that over the summer, Ali Cordero Casal, who is here with me today and is the chairman of the Venezuelan-American Endowment for the Arts.
Thank you.
Yeah, you forgot the American part. The, you know, we came to visit with Tom and with Barbara because we are looking to make sure that as our organization comes to New Rochelle, we want to work collaboratively with all of the organizations that have deep roots here and have wonderful track record of public service. And of course, the library is one of those shining beacons of those activities. And so we got together and we spoke and we shared some of our plans and aspirations. And we hope to be able to coordinate a couple of events that we will take place here at the library prior to the opening of the art center, the Vaia New Rochelle Art Center in December of 2020. So anybody that goes along Main Street right now and gets to the old Lowe's Theater site will see there's a lot of construction going on. And this, and RXR, who is the developer of the site, still has to complete all of that before they can hand it over to us. So then we can begin our construction and transform the space into the cultural center that we hope will be an exciting addition to the city of New Rochelle. So I want to introduce Ali Cordero Casal, who will share a little bit about the history of Vaia and what we hope to accomplish here in New Rochelle. Ali?
Okay. Thank you for having us. It's a pleasure. My name is Ali Cordero Casal. I was born in Venezuela, but have lived in the United States during several years. And we are very, very proud to be part of the New Rochelle transformation, all that is going on here. And especially, my vision is to have New Rochelle a place in the world map of the arts. We have all the experiences for that, be artists in residence, be in halls, be performances. And we believe that we can do our humble contribution for that mission. A little bit about us, well, we were founded in June of 1990 in honor of a very important Venezuelan hero, independent hero, Jose Antonio Paez. He was four times president of Venezuela. He was our first president, constitutional president. And he died in New York in 1873, I think. At a very long age, which was very unusual, died like 83. And all his colleagues who worked in the independence died at 70, 75. The one who died maybe older was Simon Bolivar at 45 years old or 47, something like that. And the last 10 years, he was dedicated to culture and art. He was a tenor, and he was a writer, and he was interested in all the arts. And that is not known in our country and many places. He's known as an independent hero, a warrior. His Battle of Carabobo won the independence of Venezuela. And that was the beginning of the independence of like five other countries. That are Simon Bolivar and Paez and all these independent warriors help our neighbor countries to be independent. So in honor of him, we put together this foundation in during all these almost 30 years we have worked for the arts. The, what we have done, we have sponsored exhibitions, visual art performances. We have helped a museum in Venezuela to be alive in these difficult times in our country that you are all aware. And we have worked for American and Venezuelan art. Our foundation has the particular difference that is a bi-national foundation. We can, you can see in our programs when we bring an American artist to Mexico or to Berlin. You can see how we sponsor exhibitions of American artists in Venezuela or Venezuelan artists in the United States. We, I was very proud to have Luis Cancel about 10 years ago as a curator of one of our shows. When we were walking here, we were remembering our longtime friendship and how he came to Venezuela and did this extraordinary show called Five 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 with five Americans and five Venezuelans artists. And this is a new stage. Even that our name is Venezuelan-American Endowment for the Art, the venue here is not a Venezuelan-related project only because of that we are the promoters and that we have the experience. We put together a museum that's been activity for 30 years. And that is the first museum in Latin America that you can visit on your phone in a 3D projects. Instead of spending like money in a catalog, you all have bought catalogs, beautiful catalogs in museums and keep them in your personal libraries at home. But if you remember that exhibition that you saw in our museum, you can share it with your family in the phone. And your kids can see it and all that. With your finger, you go and visit the all the museums. If you like a piece, you press there a little button and you see the name. So all those experiences, we presented credentials without knowing anybody. We knew about this. They were looking for an operator for the Black Box Theater. We went there, they sent us the specifications, and we present all our experiences, all that we have done in the past. And thank God, they thought we were qualified for this project. So this is a Westchester New Rochelle project. Even, we are branding this in a different way. It's going to call New Rochelle Arts. It is art center, but the word center is not that important. We need to tell people that what is happening inside is about art. So in the, in the, how to say this? The flyer that you have in your hands is that logo and a little bit about us. But the most important thing is that the same way that we do in that museum that we put together a little bit more than three decades ago, we believe that the future is the youth. And our work is principally dedicated to the students, to the new generations, to dedicate our work to them so they can create an impact in the world. Because you don't know if a guy from one, a young boy or a young girl from one of these schools of Westchester, there are many, thank God, because we are working a lot to make this possible for them. We have to raise millions of dollars. We have to have an amazing team of people. We have to do excellent curatorial works, like shows that bring people to New Rochelle. Let's say we have an Andy Warhol show. Everybody in Westchester will want to come because there has not been a full solo show of Warhol here. So what we want is to bring these kids. And you don't know if one of those of the New Rochelle College or the New Rochelle High School will become the future Picasso of the world in this 21st century. So as we don't know, we have to do things right. Because I believe that any one of these kids could be that one or many more, more than one. So we, our team has this commitment with this area to do things very well, to, how to say, to honor the responsibility that they have given us. I believe that the most important is la voluntad. I don't know how to say it in English. La voluntad, la buena voluntad, like the commitment, the will. That is our main assets. We didn't came here showing all the boards financial statements with millions of dollars. We came here with our experience and with our heart to do things right. I am now a resident of New Rochelle. Since one week ago, I have moved here. Estoy a la orden. My home is your home, 360 Huguenot. And I am super happy.
Library card.
And I plan to live here for a long time because at my age, to move again is not a good idea. So I have the pleasure of leaving you again with Luis Cancel. He will tell you a little bit of the times that this building will take place, how, a little bit, not all, how we will be financing this. And our intention of teaming with all the institutions in Westchester and being only one. Okay? The New Rochelle Public Library is a great institution that we respect very much. Our institution, the colleges and schools and the other, our venues of New Rochelle, we have to become one. How are we going to do it? I don't know. We have to sit like you guys and do do things together. Our main asset is la unión de voluntades, the union of wheels. Of goodwill. That will make this possible. And the money, by viene. What do you do with millions of dollars in a bank? No. What is important is the impact that that money can do in the lives of others. That's my belief. I don't know if you know that the mother Teresa of Calcutta, who died, now she's a saint, had the largest private account on the name of an individual. Because she did so much for humanity that all the world were giving donations to them, to her. And what she did was put the money into the lives of others and leave herself in humility. She gave an example to all those around her to live in humility. And that's what we have to do. Lord, they hope on Mr. Luis Cancel, somebody that is my friend and I admire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ali. Do I have a minute or more, Arsal?
Yes.
Okay. So just to elaborate a little bit about the timing, because we hear many questions about this. So we expect that the city and RXR and the foundation will sign the lease within the next week or so. And we're hoping that around the middle of November, there'll be a public ceremony at the site, sort of officially transferring control of the site to the operators. And from that point on, our clock starts ticking. And so we, you know, have already have a major grant that's been earmarked toward the first phase. One of the things that we did to try to make it very practical, to make this cultural center come to life quickly, was to divide the construction and the renovation of the interior into two phases. So the first phase, which is what we hope to inaugurate in early December of 2020, will include the galleries, two galleries, the café, the arts education classroom. And the Black Box will be sort of delineated, and we will be able to use it somewhat, but it won't be in its final state. And then we will continue to fundraise for the Black Box Theater. And so our goal is to raise about $10 million that would, both for construction and for a little bit of an endowment to help with the operations of the arts center. And the Black Box is one of the largest and most expensive part of the endeavor. So we are going to be looking to find perhaps somebody who, some great philanthropist that wants their name on the Black Box Theater. And this would be a great opportunity for, you know, for an individual to step up and give something back to New Rochelle for generations to come. And so our goal with the Black Box Theater is to bring it online like in the spring of 2022. That's the conservative projection. If somebody stepped up sooner with the funding, it can happen a lot faster. So with that, let me just thank the board for this opportunity to share with you what our aspirations are and our excitement at joining the New Rochelle community. Thank you.
I don't.
The only comment I want to make is the organization will be partnering with the library and will have two concerts here prior to that phase, the completion of Phase One. And they'll be free of charge, open to all.
Exactly.
And we're very excited about that and continuing to partner with the organization to make the cultural experience here in New Rochelle even richer than it already is.
And just to give his people a sense of the kind of programming that we hope to do. So the first concert that we will do with the library will be a classical concert of French Baroque music, sort of acknowledging and giving a tip of the hat to the founders of the city of New Rochelle. And the second one is a jazz performance. And then, you know, we'll, this is the broad range of programming that we expect to do at the Arts Center. Thank you.
Oh, I think, sorry. It's not really a question. It's more just a comment. Just thank you for just checking in and having the conversation and sort of establishing a foundation of collaboration and dialogue. It just really goes a long way. And I know it's, well, you're dealing with a lot of different things as I can hear, given the timeline for the project. But I'm pretty confident that we're all grateful for the cooperative measure that you took the time to sit in the meeting and just chat with the board and let us know the plans. And it's exciting. I think it just really goes a long way in establishing trust and building community. So thank you. And welcome to New Rochelle's New Rochelle Center.
Ali, welcome. Great. Thank you.
Yep, I just want to chime in with warm welcomes, and it's really great to have you here. I have two quick questions. How, what size is the theater? How many people generally?
Okay, so we felt that, you know, we could have, you know, the actual physical space on the second floor is about a little over 10,000 square feet. And it seems like a lot, but actually it's not.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
And so we, you know, we did have a little bit of polling, a little bit of asking people what were the kinds of things they needed. And if we had devoted it to only a Black Box Theater, of course, it could be larger. But we felt exhibitions had a very important role to play. And of course, arts education has a very important role to play. So the Black Box Theater right now will be able to provide flexible seating for between 90 and 120 individuals. So, and some people have asked me, well, what is a Black Box? Well, as opposed to, this is considered a proscenium stage. Fixed stage, fixed seating, audience and performers always have the same relationship. In a Black Box Theater, this doesn't exist. It's totally flexible. So depending on the production, depending on the presentation, depending on the goals of the performers, they can do it in the round, they can do it any way they want. And so that's the wonderful feature of Black Box Theater.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We look forward to a partnership that will be new and exciting. So thank you for sharing everything with us, and we certainly look forward to what's ahead. So I'd like to move on to the next part of our meeting, financial reports. Tim? I mean, Tom?
Tom.
Wrong you.
Yes.
Wrong person.
Wrong house.
Thank you, Deirdre. Well, the fiscal year is completing the first quarter. We're doing quite well. I do a few updates. As you know, every year around this time, the school district conducts a thorough audit of both its books as well as the libraries. Our administrative assistant has been working dutifully to cooperate. So we fully expect that an audit document will be made available to the community, ourselves, within the next month or so, sometime before the end of November. And we will share that information with the board and with the community. Also relative to this audit, we are waiting for final and formal numbers relative to the fiscal year that ended in June. And unofficially, we know that we did well. We ended in the black, and that's exciting. So that's what I have to report, and quite a lot more to talk about, I imagine, at the November meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Do you have any statistics you want to share with us? Any highlights?
Highlights, our eBooks are, again, are moving, our databases, our collection too as well. You folks heard me speak a few meetings before about our issues with the Westchester Library Systems IT product. We're still struggling with that. Our statistics are uncertain. And we're working within the organization with the staff as well as amongst the library directors to try to fix a situation that's proving to be very challenging to our staff as well as our public. That's where we stand.
Okay. Francis, we now move to the WLS report.
Okay, yes.
Well, he just talked about WLS, so.
A little bit.
Francis has more.
Thank you. Let me begin by thanking the board and the foundation and so on for this splendid gateway project. I think that has really lifted the library, has given it warmth, pleasantness, et cetera. And it's quite a pleasure really to come into the library and enjoy this new arrangement. And I think that is a good introduction to opening the books and learning. So congratulations to the board and the foundation there. Secondly, I also want to associate myself with the views that have been expressed, welcoming the mission of the Viya New Rochelle Art Center. From the presentation, I think this is going to be a wonderful project. Once completed, it's going to increase the wealth and the entertainment dimension of New Rochelle. I think it's something that we warmly welcome. And the fact that it's associated with the library, I think that's really great. As far as the WLS is concerned, I'd like to refer you to page two of our minutes where it is reported, Tom reported that Teri Kishna and Sean Ryan and the executive director agreed to encourage WLS board to authorize RFF, that is a reply, request for proposals, in order to employ consultants specifically tasked to study the Evergreen ILS and structure and functionality and so on. What Tom reported in this paragraph, if you read through it, is pretty much the situation as it is now. The problems generated by the institution of Evergreen and so forth continue. And I think many libraries still continue to experience that. And the board has been very mycised with the matter, trying to see how to resolve it, how to encourage WLS and the different library directors work together to try to resolve it. After considerable discussions, one was that a month or so ago, last time we met, there were some discussions within the board as to whether we should have an audit or not and so on. But it was finally agreed, which I supported, to have the idea of having an audit and a periodic review as well. And so with the assistance, the input from the Public Library Directors Association, an audit committee was formed. And so the request for proposals was created. And a number of vendors have been approached, have been asked to, the committee was created on the 20th of August, that's about a month and a half ago. And a number of vendors were approached to try to help us deal with the problems. And responses, S of us, responses were asked. The vendors were asked to present their responses by September 13th. And that's about a month ago. Now, the request for proposals was only received from one vendor, S of now. And the others, I think, about 10 or 12 vendors were. And the others, I think, about 10 or 12 vendors were approached, and only one has responded. So, we asked in the board, why did the others not respond? Did they see some problems with the, with the proposal that they couldn't deal with it? It was, it was a little curious. But anyway, only one has, so far, responded. And so, we asked the executive director to continue to have a dialogue with the others and then see, you know, why they're not responding or if they could respond. And so, there you are. The, the audit, IT audit committee has now been established. And, and it is functioning. There's also been, and as regards the virtual desktop infrastructure, we were informed that a, a third vendor with expertise in malware platform, which hosts the BID, oh, this is a technical thing, I think you understand. To review our current settings and determine how they relate to the overall stability and responsiveness of the logon system. That vendor has been approached, and I believe he is, is working on that. So, he should be giving us some, we're giving the executive director some corrective, corrective actions, which should be taken into account. We will see, perhaps in our next meeting, they will report to us on that. The, the WLS has also contracted a vendor known as Equinox to try to help them with the various problems that are arising from the application of Evergreen and, and the BID, VDI rather. In fact, during the reception, I had the opportunity to talk to one of the technicians, and it really came home to me how serious this problem is. I deal with it more as a, as a director at the policy level, but the libraries actually handle this thing on a day-to-day basis. And seeing from this gentleman expression, you could feel the frustrations that the libraries are going through on a day-to-day basis. And not only our library, which is one of the biggest, but also the other libraries. So, it struck me that this is a major system-wide problem that has to be tackled seriously, not half-bad. And, and I'll, I'll continue to, to insist on that at the board. I was also happy to know that Help Desk Support was, was created. I hope that is, is working. That was created last month. So, I don't know how well that is functioning. Maybe our director can, can tell us that. The, the new Help Desk platform went live and provides users with more detailed confirmations about submitted work order and gives users the ability to track the progress of a work and order to completion. So, let, let's see how that, that, that plays out. But certainly, the idea of Help Desk is, is a good one. And lastly, as a result of WLS effort to deal with these problems, there have been a lot of staffing changes. The IT director has been changed, Kalu Wari has been replaced by General Agent Wilson Arana. I had the opportunity to talk with him briefly, and it struck me as a serious guy. He knows what he's talking about, quite approachable, and, and, and seems to have the concerns that a director in that position should have. At least that's, I got good feeling from him. I understand that his system librarian position is vacant, and then that, that should be filled pretty soon. So, that is roughly apart from all the little in-house problems that we're to deal with, budget, et cetera. These are the major issues that the board has been concerned with. So, I want to leave you with the impression that the, the problem generated from the application of Evergreen and the VDI and so on, this problem is very much alive, and they really continue to, to affect the operation of the library, particularly the, the staff and even the clients. And I think the sooner this problem is, is addressed and resolved, the better. Thank you.
Could I, I just want to thank Francis for that presentation, particularly his point of view relative to the system that we have, which is truly not functioning. Actually, I talked to some of our staff, and they're so frustrated. They've sent me various reports of how the system is working. I'd like to share it with you. Some of them were unsolicited, some of them were very honest in their point of view. And we're appreciative of Francis's support. And I can tell you that there's a large group of the county directors that are very intent on trying to reach a point where the system will function better, will allow the staff to do its job in a timely manner, provide great customer service. It's, it's a battle, and it's sort of surprising. We thought in 2019, we wouldn't be facing some of these issues that seem so basic, issues that might dealt with 20 years ago and were solved. And yet, here we are now, dealing with them again. But there are a lot of folks, both directors and on the board, and also there are some staff members who are working towards coming up with a solution that's, that will be acceptable to us.
Thank you. And I look forward to the day when we're at one of these meetings, and Evergreen is no longer an issue for you and our patrons. So, just quickly on the president's report. As you know, we all were at the planning board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we spoke. And so, we have been in contact, in contact with the city. As a precursor to meeting with the developers, which is the ultimate goal, in order to really seek some sort of collaborative work, much like what was displayed earlier, we will be meeting with the city just to kind of understand a little bit more what their role was or is, but really to meet with the developers. So, we're kind of getting that together. Whitney and I have both been in contact, and three of us can be at that meeting. So, it will be Whitney, myself, and then whoever else. If Dan wants to go as a executive board member, he can go. If he can't, if one of you want to attend, that'd be great, and Tom should attend. So, I will be back in touch with you guys to let you know when, when those meetings happen. But that is moving forward. And does anybody have any questions? No? And the second thing is, I did ask last time for my fellow trustees to please send me a couple of lines about their vision, kind of when they ran. What was their vision for the library? It will help us as we talk to different folks about our needs assessment. And so, if we don't, if Whitney and I don't get that information, your views won't, your vision won't be included, and I'd hate for that to happen. You're here because people thought you should be here. So, it's important we get those thoughts. So, that's all I have. So, I only received one person. So, I only received one person. If I could get everybody else's within a couple of weeks, that'd be great. So, that's me. And now, I'd like to turn to the director's report. Tom?
Thank you, Deidre. I'm happy to report, after waiting well over a year, our, our New York State grants finally arrived.
You mean the money?
The money.
Oh.
The money. The money showed up. The checks arrived. We cashed them. They didn't bounce. It's good news. $140,000 for the first phase of our second-floor renovation is here. The foundation has already provided the matching money. So, we're starting the process of, of the work that will, will transform that, that second-floor space. A smaller amount of money, but really quite as important, is the money that we received. The, let's see, the $8,625 for the Huguenot Children's Library. The boiler and hot water heater, after 25 years of, of fine service, is ready to end. So, we have the money now to replace it. And so, with a small match from us, we'll be able to do that. We've actually started the process of obtaining the vendors that we've hired. We'll, we'll get a permit from the city, and hopefully, this will all be done in the next few weeks. And we'll be ready to, to keep our library, you know, warm with hot water throughout the next year and many years to come. I have really great news, and I'm surprised Francis didn't highlight it because he was part of the effort to approve the grant that we received, which was for the main library, if you remember, the second and final phase, major phase of the second-floor renovation. We applied for $283,188, and we got it all, which is great. Exciting. So, the directors' group approved it. The WLS board approves it. Now, of course, comes the waiting period where it goes to the state of New York, which will take an interminable amount of time, but it's worth waiting for. $283,000 is definitely worth waiting for.
It's too bad they don't send interest in.
I know. That would be. Can we, maybe we should talk to our legislators about that.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Well, maybe we should have been that thought. All right. So, it's exciting, really exciting. It's, I believe, the largest of our many grants that we've received. And so, we're over 100, $1.8 million in state grant money over the years. So, it's, it's exciting. We're transforming the face of our library, thanks to that money and the money that the foundation will provide us as the matching amount. And last, tonight was just another example of that kind of partnership with the state government provided, most of the money and the foundation provided the, the final amount, which allows us to improve our library at no direct cost to our taxpayers. The second grant, which is much smaller, again, at the Huguenot Children's Library, is for $9,375. That was approved. And that will be for the replacement of the stairway that connects the second floor with the basement. Currently now, it's not in great shape. It's, it's precarious. It's a precarious trip. And so, we'll have the money for that, and we'll go forward. See, as you know, we, we had the official ribbon cutting for the Gateway Project, and we're almost done. All we have to do is the signage above the library. We have plenty, knock on wood, a fair amount of money to, to cover that. And so, that's turned out to be successful. And that is that. I would like to mention that the next foundation board meeting is November 18th. I do want to share with the board that we are working on a wishlist, and you folks will get it long before the foundation gets it. So, you'll see.
Can I just say, I actually would love for you to work in concert with Beth and Chuck.
Chuck. Okay.
So that by the time we see it, they will have already decided or made some recommendations for it.
They'll, they'll, we, I haven't, I haven't gotten all the pieces yet, but when I get it, you'll get it, and it'll be in advance of the meeting, you and Beth. So, you can look at it. We can have, we can talk about it. So.
And, and in fact, if any of the trustees would like to kind of speak into whatever Chuck and Beth kind of work with on the foundation, I'd like that to happen too. So, if we.
It's, it's, it's fairly open-ended because they won't make a formal decision until the, the present, the formal presentation is made at the May meeting, and that at the final meeting of the, of the fiscal year in June is the vote.
So, if there's things that trustees or we have talked about, or we know we want to do, or we've kind of, this is the time to talk to Chuck and Beth about it, and Tom. But so that we're kind of ahead of this as opposed to behind of the trustees.
Agreed. Finally, just reminding people that the Friends board meeting will be next Wednesday.
Right, I said I'm going.
Right, right. Yes. It was canceled because of Yan Kapoor this, this past week. And their, their monthly book sale, I believe, is the first Friday of the month, which I think is November 2nd as well.
So, I also, I had asked you when the November 1 was because.
I haven't gotten that answer yet.
Yeah. So, so I'm going to ask somebody else on the board to go to the November.
I think it's the 8th, but I.
I was going to go to November. They didn't have October.
No, because of Yan Kapoor. It's next Wednesday.
They didn't, so there was no, on our famous doodle, there was no October. So, I was signed up for November. So, I'll go to October if someone could do November. I think Sarah's done hers. Chuck has done hers.
Yeah, Chuck.
Yeah, I could just. When is it? It's November.
I'm not.
He's going to let us know.
I believe it's the 8th.
I mean, I could do it if no one else.
I'm waiting for confirmation from Amy.
I, I can possibly too, if nobody else is.
I'll, I'll keep you all.
And when did you say the next foundation meeting is?
The 18th. And I just want to remind you about the work that the Friends do. You see it. You see the books that are sold to the community at a very modest cost. So, it allows all our residents to afford a personal library. But the, the payoff, the positive feature for us is that the Friends give us quite a bit of money. At this point now, we are up to over $72,000 from the Friends, and we're not nearly done with the fiscal year. And that's the most money I think we've ever gotten, and the year is not done. So, I encourage everybody to support the Friends, whether it be by buying material or becoming a Friends member. It's as little as $10 a year. Can be a little bit more if you so choose. So, we're lucky. The Friends and the foundation are extraordinary advocacy groups just in terms of their support of the library and their fundraising arms.
What about reappointment and board member services?
Oh, right.
Yes, this is all. No. I was on it. Okay.
And personnel commit, personnel report. I can tell you that we are on the cusp of announcing our new librarian one. As you know, one of our librarians decided to leave and go back to his native land. I miss him. But we're very, very excited about, about the new staff member who will be joining us. We're just still working out a few details. And I think it's going to make a big difference in a number of ways. And I'm really, I'll be excited to share more at the November meeting because I think we have a lot of really good things to look forward to as, as we go forward in this year and other years.
Okay. So, now we can turn to our trustee committee reports. Do we have anything from budget? No. We do have stuff from Buildings and Grounds.
Yes, thank you, Sarah. As, as you folks recall, the Buildings and Grounds CROC Committee recommended that the board approve the proposal of Architectural Preservation Studio as the vendor that we would like to conduct our building audit. And with, with that in mind, our attorney came back to us with a few minor edits. And Sarah and I spoke as recently as yesterday about, about this issue. And I'm in conversations with the principal, our contact at APS, Doug Emilio. And I think, I think we'll be signing the contract in the very near future, which will then start the process of the building audit, of the study of the physical plant, where we stand, what needs attention now, what needs attention a little bit later. Cost estimations will be created as well, and all will be shared with the board in as timely a manner as possible because we know it's important for the board to look at this document, consider its implications as we go forward in the year. It may have some impact on our budget proposal.
Community relations. Do you, Sarah, you, Dan, Daniel's not here. Does anybody want to report on his behalf? You do.
I do.
Do you want to? Okay.
This is a document that Barbara created, and she shared it with Daniel and myself as the backup. And so, one really sort of exciting program that this is, I think we're in our fourth year, is Meet the Teachers Night. And we had been doing it on a smaller scale. But thanks to the approval of the board and the residents, we had more money. And the money allowed us to have representatives at all Meet the Teachers Nights at our elementary and middle schools. So, between September 11th and 2026th, our staff attended 13 events. We spoke with 987 individuals, signed up 96 adults and 87 children. eighty-seven children for library cards and, um, it was very successful and we're gonna continue to do it. Getting, getting the opportunity to connect with parents on that evening is, is crucial and, you know, we certainly connect with our students through, um, tours of the library, et cetera, but connecting with the parents is a new and important outreach effort. So, so that's that. Um, uh, our library coordinated and hosted eight excellent programs for the New Rochelle Arts Fest that just recently concluded. We saw great numbers, um, during those days. Many program participants, art viewers, the Reed six fifty event, uh, here on Sunday was filled to near capacity, so the theater barely had an open seat. Um, again, this was the fourth time this Reed six fifty event was held at the library, which will next be held at the Lincoln Center and then back here in New Rochelle. Um, as you folks know, our children's room, um, is really popping. We've introduced some new programs, we're seeing tremendous numbers. I should have probably highlighted some of the statistics of that, but we have great new programs, um, and it's really exciting. Um, so, so I, I, I know, um, I'm getting a lot of positive feedback. I know through some of the social media avenues as well, we're hearing good things and, um, we're gonna continue to go forward in that direction. Um, I'm asked to mention that coming up in the future, the, um, the US Census Bureau will be, um, and, and our library will be hosting a job fair for twenty-twenty census takers here in the facility on Tuesday, October twenty-second, from eleven AM to four-thirty. Um, and Barbara has been asked, Barbara Davis, our Community Relations Coordinator, has been asked to serve on the city's Complete Count Committee. And this initiative with the Census Bureau is, I think, Deirdre, you may be familiar with that, aren't you, serving on a county?
I'm on the county.
County.
Complete.
Right, and we're, and this was through the Westchester Library System.
Yeah.
So.
Terry is on the committee with me.
Right, and he's our contact too as well. So, and I, you know, I can't stress enough how important this census is and that everybody be counted and the library is a community hub, it's a place that many people visit. We are, we're gonna be in the middle of it and support it as we go forward. Um, let's see, um, we have, um, a third screening of that very powerful, important documentary, Resilience. It will be here in the Ossie Davis Theater and it will be on October twenty-fourth at six PM. It's worth seeing if you haven't seen it. And, um, last but not least, our Big Family Market Days continue to go forward, uh, very popular, on Saturdays in the Farmers Market, of course, in our Ruby D Park. And, um, focus will be on children's entertainments and craft, as well as all the great vendors that, um, made this year a big success. That's it.
Yeah, I'm putting resilience in here. Um, is that six o'clock?
Yep, on the twenty-fourth.
Yep. Thank you.
Welcome.
Finance?
Uh, no.
Personnel, we actually did meet, personnel met with, um, Idira, myself, Gene and Tom, met, uh, to start talking about the contract that is up next year, um, and just to kind of start discussing different things we need to think about. Um, and we are gonna start meeting, I don't even, did we say this year before next?
January.
January we'll start meeting, so that is in process.
Can I ask a question of the Personnel Committee?
Maybe.
Or I cannot, it's a good question. Do, and it's actually, maybe the Personnel Committee, maybe it's more Tom, I'm not sure. Do we have any, um, do we publish any statistics or do we collect any information and is, is it even like permitted under the union contract around like the diversity of our library staff? I'm just curious.
There, you know, we, we certainly have that stat, uh, that information and there's no prohibition in the union contract that would, um, allow us, um, that would deny us that ability. We certainly could.
I'm just asking because, um, not because I think there's an issue or problem, but it, but just because maybe it's something for the Personnel Committee to think about, whether we want to start sort of tracking that stuff and, you know, including it in information and, you know, uh, it's just something to think about.
Okay.
That's all.
Um, Policy Committee.
No, we have to meet, we just, um, we can meet over the credit card usage.
Okay, is that for the new exciting cell checkout?
Yes.
That is so exciting, I cannot wait to use that. But it did.
What's that? They do, we, um, it took a while, uh, and I have to just commend one of our staff members, Daniel O'Gerry, for really running interference between WLS and, um, the vendor Bibliotech. I honestly, Daniel, I think sport, spent more time in front of those machines than he did at his desk or the reference desk, but he made it happen and it's working and, um, as you might imagine, people love it, kids love it, you know, you know, and, um, the one piece that we're not ready to do, but I know the Policy Committee will provide us with, uh, the input, is the use of credit cards and we will begin to accept credit cards per the decision of the Policy Committee and we will be able to accept it at the desk too as well.
I will, actually, in November, I have a work trip that conflicts with our meeting, but I will endeavor to have us meet and then somebody can report back so that we can answer to you, so I apologize for that.
That's, that's fine.
So that we're good to go in November.
You know, I would also ask that the, um, Policy Committee reconsider the issue that had already discussed, which was, um, the potential permanent elimination of fines for chi, the use of children's material. Um, I'm, I'm hoping, it was successful, we had a lot of positive anecdotal, um, responses and certainly, um, Chuck had sent an article recently from the Wall Street Journal about that. Um, I, I, I know that I saw another article, um, come across my desk about Chicago Public Library, uh, a system with over seventy, um, branches has also eliminated, um, that, that fine structure because ultimately the goal is we want our children reading, we don't want to prevent, uh, present barriers that would, uh, prevent them from coming into the library.
I think ultimately, um, I think there's a lot of agreement with that, but I think one data point we wanted to see was in terms of revenue, just so that we're making it an informed and can communicate and informed decision, um, because that was something that we wanted to just be mindful of and not, and even if we support it just so that, for budget purposes, we're conscious that there is whatever number of dollars, so maybe there's a way, I don't know, to, to compare, like, in the summer, did we notice a decrease in that, in the line that would reflect? Okay, so maybe we can just have that, um, and then it, that way, when you, uh, Budget Committee needs for spring and everything else, we can just be fully informed of what's coming in, what's coming out and how to make up for any, any loss.
Agreed.
So not so much to prevent access, but just to be informed about.
Just go to zero, right?
Right, right.
For children, but for adults, it's still in place until, until, until the board decides otherwise.
Just curious, after abolishing that, uh, the fines, has there been any noticeable change in?
You know, um, when the board made the decision, uh, to abolish fines, uh, for a temporary basis for the, um, the timeframe of the summer, it took WLS about a month to make it happen, so we didn't get a full summer experience, which was unfortunate. We basically got just a little bit over a month.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, Gene, I know, is on top of the finances. I, I can tell you that I had a number of conversations with our circulation staff and community reaction was quite positive.
Great. Yeah, I, again, I think there's a lot of support for it and certainly.
Of course.
The Policy Committee is made up of mama bears with kids, so we are fully, uh, aware of wanting to.
But it's good to know the implications.
Our kids in our neighborhood, but I think also just being my, if it's five dollars, two dollars, a thousand dollars, whatever it is.
Right.
As folks in the Budget Committee go into that decision process, they know what to allocate and think about differently. So just having the data to support the decision.
Right, I, I agree and I, I just want to point out one final thing relative to, um, to fines. Um, our, more and more of our circulation relates to e-products and e-audio products and as you know, there are no fines there.
Oh.
It just goes away.
Oh, 'cause it comes out of your cute, like your Kindle, it's just gone.
So, so, I mean, um, the technology is such that, that the material is yanked out of your machine, whereas, you know, a book in someone's house is not as easy to retrieve.
I just brought.
But, so fines are diminishing, you know, they are, it's just a fact of life across the board, you know, so.
I just pictured you like sleeping in someone's.
And unplugging with Kindle.
You know, Chuck, now that it's on, now that it's on camera, I have to just, issue a no comment.
Thank you, Tom.
Um, Special Committees, so the Special Committee, so Memorial, go ahead. Special Projects Committee.
The Special Committee.
We're called, it's called Special Projects.
Special Committee.
Gene, can we change it to Special Projects?
That I, I, that was my fault.
Okay, Tom, can we change it to special? She's looking at me like, why are you looking at me?
Also, Tom, take the scoop of the box off.
Yeah, yeah, that was my mistake.
This is all Tom's doing.
It's all my doing. See, I stayed up late sneaking in people's houses.
You wanna talk about the special project?
No. Well, do you want to talk about the Memorial Highway Project? Tom, you probably know more, does someone know more? Um, I don't know the exact precise details of where we are with the grant, but.
I, I believe there are two grants, or three grants that are outstanding.
Three.
One is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from, um, Amy Paulin, um, our General Assembly Person. There is a fifty thousand dollar grant from, um, Senator Stuart Cousins and a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Smart Family Foundation and, um, our administrative assistant can affirm that the documentation about those two grants, have they all been, we've just signed them tonight?
We signed the Paulin Grant tonight.
Tonight, they.
You're not, you're not doing the Cousins one.
Oh, we're not?
It's going through.
Oh, it's going through, okay.
Yes, it's the Smart.
Okay, yeah. So, there's that. Um, one of the outstanding issues that, um, that, Sarah is the Chair of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, we've had a conversation again as recently as yesterday, is the, uh, request by the foundation that, that the library, um, as part of the building audit, consider paying for the site survey for the Memorial Highway space since apparently this, the, if, if, if the foundation goes forward with this project, they need a site survey done in order to better understand what the implications of the project and, and the costs of the project. And we are sort of going around, working with, um, Architectural Preservation Studios. We, we received a price that was quite high, um, and I, I asked Doug Emilio, the principal, to, instead of including, include the whole building, could we have, um, an apples-to-apples comparison and just do that courtyard area? And then we would compare it to the, uh, price that the foundation obtained through the surveyor as recommended by the, um, landscape architect. So, I, I think that's an important piece that we will be making a decision upon in the near future. Once that survey is done, I think the foundation can attach more tangible, um, uh, uh, figures and, uh, of what needs to be done and how much it will cost.
Right, 'cause I think we're in the phase now of trying to make sure that, um, uh, whoever is assessing our application is, um, has the details, greater detail about the budget and how the money will be used and we need that documentation to back it up, correct?
Agreed.
Um, Broadcast Equipment Project Update?
That's, um, actually, I, Nicolette, I know I, when I spoke to Barbara Davis, she said, I said, Tuesday, they were finishing up that work. I, do you know if that work has been done? I just wondered. Give a.
Maybe three or four, I'm not kidding, Chuck is just telling me, that goes back to me, this was like one of my first projects on the board and I got on the board in twenty sixteen.
And it was.
That's not even radical improvements in technology.
I know. We don't need it any longer.
A two-hour meeting, remember? Yeah, exactly, so we're laughing, 'cause it was like one of the very first assignments.
Well, congratulations.
Yes.
We got it.
It's not up, the vision was there. We were supposed to use it in the summer.
No, it didn't, it didn't happen, but, you know, it, as Nicolette said, we're just about there. I, I think the training needs to be done and I think our city representative needs to take a look at it and once that's all set, it should be functioning A and B, we will present the invoice to the city and they will, um, reimburse through this PEG grant that we received.
Great.
And we can also, in future years, if we feel the need to enhance it, there will be monies available for that too as well.
Very good.
Good, um, I, there's the Needs Assessment Update, so as you know, we used to have a Needs Assessment Committee, but we have, um, combined that with our Special Projects Committee, um, and we're basically regrouping, um, the Special Projects Committee will be meeting to review, um, the two proposals we received and to be in touch with the two, um, proposers and make sure that they, so this has been a while, we had the election, we had a re, um, kind of reconfiguration of our committee, so, um, next step is just to, to meet and, and reach out to those proposers and interview them. If they're, assuming they're still interested, interview them and make a selection. We will make that all public. Um, there were two proposers, Perch Advisors and Public Works Partners, both, um, great, uh, firms located in, in the city, um, Brooklyn or Manhattan based and, um, with great kind of backgrounds and experience, so, um, stay tuned. Norman Rockwell Museum update, do you want to talk more about that?
Yep. Um, in late summer, we received a letter from the Norman Rockwell Museum asking the library if it would consider making a temporary loan of our Land of Enchantment painting to the Rockwell Museum for an exhibit that is slated to begin in June, June sixth, and will end on September seventh. And the exhibit is called Enchanted, A History of Fantasy Illustration, and our painting is a perfect example of, of that. It won't be specifically just Norman Rockwell, it will consist of all sorts of art from different eras, um, different illustrators, but, um, um, the Rockwell Museum considers our painting as an important part of what the story they want to tell. And, um, we have had a history in the past, starting with, actually, with Mr. Rockwell, of loaning the painting out to various organizations on a temporary basis and, um, our experiences have always been good. We actually loaned out, um, this, this same painting to the Rockwell Museum many years ago and it was, it was a good experience. And so, um, I did reach out to the executive director and I was, um, kind of, um, moved towards the curator, uh, person and he was really helpful. Um, and he, he actually answered a lot of the questions I had. Whitney, um, we're lucky enough to have somebody like Whitney Barrett, who has, um, a background, um, both education and experience with public art, and she posed a series of questions that I did get answers. Um, and basically, um, the scenario would be, um, would, would the Rockwell Museum give our library the appropriate credit? And they said, absolutely, you tell us how you want it. I said, well, we, if there's a catalog, we'd like to be credited as such. Um, in the exhibit, you know, if someone were to journey to Stockbridge, it needs to indicate that it's our library's possession. I said, not a problem. Um, in terms of details of transport, insurance, et cetera, uh, transport is, um, a vendor that they use all the time to transport their art, uh, to and fro from the museum, they would totally pick up the cost of that. Um, the insurance, they gave us their insurance coverage, which is significant. I did send it to our insurance carrier and they had a conversation with, um, the, um, staff member at the Rockwell Museum who deals with that kind of, that kind of business and, um, our insurance carrier said he felt entirely comfortable.
Yeah, it's a sizable policy, a very, very impressive.
I have it here, it's, you know.
It's like two hundred and seventy-three million dollars.
Yeah, it, it'll cover our pay.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're good.
Yeah, um, um, there are other things that, um, we, we, we asked for as well, let's see.
What would be there, like would they have something, what would be put there, what would be asked of you?
We, we asked, actually, what's ironic is, um, the upcoming year, the summer reading theme will be fantasy and, and Land of Ench, Enchantment and of course, that's our painting. But, um, what, what I asked was, would it be possible, and this was, that's a suggestion of Barbara Davis, you know, would it be possible for you to provide a facsimile of the painting so our children aren't going without? You know, they have an illustration of what it is and it will be gone for just a few months and, and back and they seem to think that it would not be a problem. Now, of course, all the most, almost all the Rockwell paintings, at least through this Saturday, um, Evening Post, is owned not by us, but by Curtis Publishing, so they have to work with Curtis Publishing, but, um, um, the museum is, is very familiar with that firm, obviously, and they have relationships as well.
So Curtis would, um, be able to oversee any, like reproduction, um, and I don't know what the limitations are to create prints for that painting, are you, do they, they would know that, right?
They would, they would know that.
They would, they would handle all that.
We, to be honest with you, we really have not dealt with Curtis, um, over the years. Um, so, so that all should be taken care of. Um, we asked if, um, the museum would provide a signage for us, explaining to our patrons exactly what the scenario is, that it's not been sold. that it's not been sold, that it's not been stolen, that it's on temporary loan to the Rockwell Museum in regards to this particular exhibit. I also have asked for not only the transport, but Barbara was very helpful. She said we should expect and demand that they cover the reinstallation, because that's not an insignificant fee, it's difficult.
She's got it up there.
Yeah. And they said yes.
That's right.
So all of this, all of this is pro forma, possible. They're more than willing to work with us. And I guess tonight, it could either be a motion or a sense of the Board that we could go forward as long as all these conditions are met. And if not, I can come back to you. I know they would like a decision in the near future, as they are starting to wind up the machine in terms of publicity and arrangement, et cetera.
So do you guys have any questions?
It's really, it sounds like they're being super great and good partners. Yeah, really accommodating, soup to nuts. They're going to be responsible for putting it back up, so it'll be done in the right way. It's not going to be us, blah, 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 getting nails. So it's great.
I can make a motion to approve the temporary loan of the Norman Rockwell painting, Land of Enchantment, to the Norman Rockwell Museum in Stockbridge, Massachusetts. All in favor? Any abstentions or, what's the word, negatory, opposed opposition? Sorry, it's late. Negatory. Okay, then the motion passes, so you're welcome, Stockbridge, and thank you.
Thank you. I'll keep you all posted as we go forward. There will be a contract that they will send us that will, that I will share with our attorney. And let our insurance company see it as well, just. It's a good point.
Thank you, that's it.
Okay, we will move to public discussion, and our first speaker will be Dorothy Oliver.
Oh, I have the mic, sorry. We have it just. Thank you. Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Dorothy Oliver. And first of all, I'd like to say that I really appreciate, we really appreciate the statement that you made last week at the Development Committee there at City Hall. And we want to thank you so much for that statement that was made. Did you look like you don't understand what I'm saying?
I'm here. I'm trying to think. I'm trying to look at you like I have to.
Oh, sorry. Come closer. Oh. Thank you.
That's good, now I can see you.
Oh, okay. I was thanking you for the statement that was made on the staff's behalf last week at the Development Planning Committee there. We really appreciate that. And also, I would like to know, can you post it? Can you post the statement? Sure. Okay, thank you. And Dorothy, you know, our hope is that you will continue to advocate for the city to preserve the two parking lots across the street there that are adjacent to, well, adjacent parking lots and the one across the street from the library on Lawton Street. Because, you know, we really would appreciate it if you guys would continue to do that.
We're working on it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker with?
Okay. Okay. Well, with that, I guess the meeting's going to be adjourned. I make a motion. I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? All negativity? All opposed? Negatory? Motion passes, we are adjourned.
Thank you.